Freeman, Fusco, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neal, Amobian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky.
For all of those who voluntarily wish to do so, you can please stand as we are led in prayer by Councilman Freeman. Immediately following the prayer, we will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Kammer.
We'll pray again. God, Father, we thank you that, again, because the sun arrives, we took a breath of oxygen this morning and we got up and about our business, maybe even without stopping and pausing and helping out with your work. But the seeking who you ask is, we ask each and every week, we ask for wisdom and we ask even for our own hearts that we might do justly, we might love mercy and that humility might be the matter by which we want. Pray again.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, will read the minutes from the previously held meeting?
Minutes from the meeting on March 5th, 2018. Council convened a regular session at 7:00 PM with President Somerville in the chair. Minutes of the previous regular meeting were approved, reading of petitions and communications, passage of the consent agenda, report of standing and special committees, passage and referral of new ordinances and resolutions, representation from various departments and divisions, public speaking period, no further business on a motion by Fusco. Council adjourned at 7:22 PM to reconvene a regular session on March 12th for a special call.
Any corrections or additions? Is there a motion?
Most of them approved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Letters, petitions, and communications?
Investment earnings report for February 2018.
File. We have before us the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage on those Freeman, Fusco, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neal, Amobian, Sims, Samples, Sample, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky.
Well now move into our old business rules. Councilwoman Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee would like time, please.
Time will be granted. Budget and Finance, Councilman Freeman?
Committee requests time.
Time will be granted. We actually have three public hearings on tonight, so if there is anyone here in the audience that is here to speak at one of our public hearings, not to be confused with our public comment period, so if you're in the audience to speak about 1250 Brown Street or 1519 Preston Avenue or to talk about Greenspire Lane, I'm going to ask if you'll please stand at this time so that you can be sworn in by a law department. Anyone here to speak on any three of those ordinances?
Okay. Can I read in the first public hearing? Legal notice. Notice hereby given in a public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, March 12th, 2018 during a regular council meeting at 7:00 PM in Council Chambers, 166 South High Street upon an ordinance authorizing conditional use to retain a solid fence within the building line setback at 1250 Brown Street.
Mr. Antonucci?
Thank you, Madam President. Members of council, Thomas Tomlin is requesting permission to retain a solid fence within this building line setback. A solid fence encloses the side and rear yard of the corner property between the rear half of the dwelling and the detached garage. The petitioner states the fence existed when they purchased the property in 2004. Planning recognizes that corner lots are more restrictive due to two building line setbacks. Petitioners stated that the solid fence prevents unwanted access to their swimming pool and allows them more usable open space. A traffic engineer conducted an inspection and agrees with the planning staff that the northwestern corner of the fence be angled in at least five feet to provide greater visibility for foot traffic traveling west on Clifford Avenue. If the petitioner angles in the northwest corner of the fence at least five feet, planning staff and planning commission recommend approval.
Thank you. So we just want to make sure that there's no one here to speak in favor or against for this ordinance. Seeing and hearing now, we will close the public hearing. Councilman Kammer?
Thank you, Madam President. Committee's report is time, please.
Okay, time will be granted.
Public hearing number two, legal notice. Notice hereby given in a public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, March 12th, 2018 during the regular council meeting at 7:00 PM in Council Chambers, 166 South High Street upon an ordinance authorizing a conditional use to retain a solid fence within the building line setback at 1519 Preston Avenue.
Mr. Antonucci?
Thank you, Madam President. Members of council, Edward Hazlitt is requesting permission to retain the solid fence within the setback at this location. The solid fence encloses the side and rear yards of the corner property between the rear of the dwelling and a detached garage. The planning staff recognizes-
Notice hereby given in a public hearing will be held by the Council of the City of Akron on Monday, March 12th, 2018 during the regular council meeting at 7:00 PM in Council Chambers, 166 South High Street upon an ordinance authorizing to change the name of Greenspire Lane to Greenspire Circle in Lake of the Woods subdivision.
Mr. Antonucci?
Thank you, Madam President. Members of council, the Eighth Ward Councilperson Marilyn Keith has requested that the planning department investigate the changing of the name of Greenspire Lane located in the Lake of the Woods subdivision. A short cul-de-sac street has just three houses addressed on it. The Lake of the Woods subdivision was developed in 1984. At that time Greenspire Lane was dedicated. Ten years later, the villages at Fairlon subdivision was established in the city of Fairlon. That allotment also designated a street as Greenspire Lane. The address ranges on the two streets are similar enough and in close enough proximity to each other, the confusion of bounds. The residents of Greenspire Lane have experienced delayed mail, confusion over provision of services, and cold food deliveries. They are also, more importantly, worried about the prospects of timely response in an emergency situation. The planning staff recognizes the unfavorable circumstance in which homeowners have been placed and is in agreement that the street name should be changed and both planning commission and planning staff recommend approval.
Thank you. Again, just want to make sure that there's no one in the audience to speak for or against this ordinance. Seeing and hearing now, we will close the public hearing. Councilman Kammer?
Thank you, Madam President. Committee's report is time, please.
Time will be granted. Councilman Kammer, what's your pleasure on the rest of the agenda?
The rest of the agenda, consider keeping everything on time. Thanks.
Okay. Time will be granted on the rest of the agenda. Public service, Councilwoman Keith?
Madam President, I don't think there should be anything on public service. That was dealt with already. It should have been filed, the ordinance.
Oh yeah, it was. It was.
Thank you. This item's already been filed. Will now move into new legislation?
Item number one, offered by Mayor Horgan, the resolution adopting an annual operating budget for the fiscal year 2018 in a current emergency.
Councilman Freeman?
Committee requests time and would just remind everyone, if you have questions about the operating budget, which we'd like to approve next week, please contact Mr. Fricker. And if you've not checked your email in the last four hours or so, most, I believe all of the concerns that were raised last week were addressed. And again, if there's any questions, please reach out to Mr. Fricker in this coming week so we can proceed with passage next week. We request time.
Thank you. Time will be granted.
Okay, item number two, offered by Mayor Horgan, an ordinance approving appropriation for the current expenses, other expenditures, and capital outlays of the City of Akron for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2018 in a current emergency.
Councilman Freeman?
Committee requests time.
Time will be granted.
Okay, item number three, offered by Samples, ordinance authorizing director of public service through the office of the purchasing agent after publicly advertising for bids to enter into a contract for grassy area restoration at various locations throughout Akron in declaring emergency.
Councilwoman Samples?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Committee is requesting consent.
This item will be placed in the consent agenda.
Item number four, offered by Kammer, ordinance authorizing director of public service without the formality of publicly advertising for bids to enter into a contract for the purchase of certain K-9 equipment for use in the Akron Police Department cruisers in declaring emergency.
Councilman Kammer?
Thank you, Madam President. Committee's report is favorable and we're asking for suspension of the rules, please.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing, no objections, the rules have been suspended.
All right, thank you, Madam President. This is just basically to equip some new cruisers with the right K-9 equipment to get our K-9 officers out on the road.
Very good. The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
Roll call, Freeman, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky. Okay, item number five, offered by Mayor Horgan, President Somerville, Sims, and Swirsky. It's a resolution endorsing the downtown Akron vision and redevelopment plan, expressing support for it, for it is as a precedent for the neighborhood planning efforts in declaring emergency.
Councilwoman Sims?
Madam President, the committee's report is favorable and we ask for suspension of the rules.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing, no objections, the rules have been suspended.
Before I yield to the offer, I just want to take a moment to once again reiterate to Susie Graham, who's here this afternoon, and to the downtown partnership, this administration, and for many of my colleagues who participated in much of the process that brought us to here. I know that it was a arduous and often tedious process, but I appreciate so greatly the opportunities that were intentional to engage a broad cross-section of our community to have some input into what we see happening downtown. I'm also very excited for the future of the continuation of the plans as we as council engage fully in our efforts to make sure that we are connecting downtown to neighborhoods and neighborhoods back to downtown so that our entire city can benefit from what we anticipate is great prosperity in our city. So with that in mind, I will now yield to my colleague, Mr. Swirsky, and then to the other primary author of the resolution, Councilwoman Margot Somerville.
Just want to thank all of the talented and tenacious people-
Mr. Swirsky, turn on your microphone, please.
I can't, there's no light.
Well, you just pull it forward, watch.
Okay. How's that?
Beautiful.
Okay.
You're okay.
Okay. So just want to thank all the talented and tenacious people who worked on this plan. It's a little bit like putting together a 500-piece puzzle, but when we're done, it's going to be something that's really beautiful and that all of us benefit from, and especially Susie Graham, the downtown partnership. I know from my own business district and council people who work with yours, sometimes it's hard to get everybody together on the same page, and I really admire your ability to do that and to provide leadership in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to kind of echo the comments of my colleagues, Councilwoman Sims and Councilman Swirsky. Again, we want to thank Susie Graham and her team for all of their hard work and dedication of putting together such a thoughtful and intentional plan for the future of downtown. So again, it's my hopes that this body council, that we can stand behind and support some of the great things that are happening in downtown Akron. So with that being said, I hope that this body will consider making a motion for council as a whole. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage, Freeman, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swirsky.
We will now move to the portion of our meeting that we refer to as our public comment period. If you wish to speak to this council during this time, you may approach the podium. We're going to ask that you please sign in, that you state your full name, spell your last name, and give us your address. Speakers are reminded that this is an official meeting. Remarks should be kept respectful and remain the council business. Speakers should refrain from making any personal attacks. Anyone who breaches the decorum will be ruled out of order and may be removed from council chambers. Is there anyone here that would wish to speak during public comment period?
Beth Ann Scruggs, 865 Store Avenue, Akron, Ohio. Four cardinal spots heading into Akron were selected for monumental pieces to be installed. Not only were two artists commissioned to construct four pieces, not one person of color was selected. We have world-renowned sculptor, sculptor Woodrow Nash, who has made his gallery and studio on Copley Road in a neighborhood he was born and raised. If you haven't seen it, go by at night and marvel at the colors and the investment he has put into his business. Though the African-American community only makes up 30.7% of the population here in Akron, we as people of color need art pieces in the urban communities to not only beautify but to also educate. Art and music are part of our culture as well. If Akron is truly an all-American city inclusive to all, we need to have chairs at all the tables. Things to ponder in closing, where are the remaining pieces going to be placed? Copley Road, Thornton Street, Vernon Boulevard, Arlington Street by Children's Services? These are some of the points into the urban communities. When it comes to cultural activities, arts, and et cetera, why are these communities an afterthought and not thought of at first? The artists should be representative of the many cultures that are in our city. Representation should be from all and not from a few. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scruggs.
Madam President, I have a request. Permission to speak to our council clerk, please? Sure. Bob, I have a request.
Right.
When you press the button to begin the three-minute passage-
Right.
Would you give an audio signal so I know when you are beginning?
Sure.
Appreciate it.
I just ordered a nice timer like it's academic. You'll be able to see it from there.
Fantastic. I love it. It just seems like time speeds up when I speak. Maybe it's because I'm getting older and getting slower.
You've only wasted a half a minute.
That's what I was worried about.
But I'll give you a couple extra seconds.
I have a couple of questions about that. Does it begin when I address the president? Does it begin when I state my address? Does it begin when I actually begin?
All three. Usually when you begin speaking.
Speaking?
Speaking with your concern, okay?
So after you have said your name and your address-
So when two and a half minutes are passed, is that correct? I mean, according to the way you press the button?
Right. I'll give you a few extra seconds. Go ahead.
I politely object to that kind of, I might as well sit down. But anyway, Madam Council and President and members of the city council and the members of the city staff, we're in a sacred season remembering the exodus from Egypt by the Israelite immigrants in the celebration of the Jewish Seder and remembering the crucifixion of Jesus of Nazareth by the powers that were in charge of Jerusalem in the celebration Christians call Good Friday. Those powers included the Roman Empire occupying Jerusalem and its sycophants who cooperated with the occupation, including King Herod, the Sadducees, the scribes, and the Pharisees in charge of the temple and in charge of the temple. In a couple of weeks, Christians will be celebrating Jesus' march on Jerusalem on Palm Sunday. Then Christians will celebrate the worst day of Jesus' short life when he was assassinated by the powers that controlled Jerusalem. He wasn't given a quick and easy death. Instead, he was beaten, tortured, nailed to a crude contraption in the shape of a Roman cross, and left to die from thirst, exhaustion, suffocation, and horrible pain in a section of the holy city, zoned Golgotha, the place of the skull. Where might we find Jesus crucified today in our town? Well, it won't be on a gold cross between two gold candlesticks in our temples. I think we might find Jesus in Second Chance Village, homeless, despised, unwanted, and in a section of town called Middlebury in Ward 10. My prayer for each of you is that you will see Jesus in each of the men and women of Second Chance Village and will give them a second chance to solve their problems their way with our gentle assistance and reverent respect for these children of God. If you want to find the risen Christ, look no farther than Second Chance Village. As you do it to these men and women, you do it to Him. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Beatty.
You still have a minute.
Thank you. I have a few more words. You are very kind. You do know that laws are made by the rich and powerful to protect themselves from the poor and vulnerable, don't you? The poor and vulnerable in Second Chance Village are a threat to no one. They're good neighbors to the battered women's shelter to the south across Marcus Street, the vacant lot across Broad Street to the west, and the one house to the north whose owner was a very bad neighbor who threatened these peaceful men and women with an axe and is now suing them for simply living next door to him. He has moved, but the tenant he went to allows his dog to trespass on Second Chance Village and move among the tents doing what dogs love to do in neighbors' yards. I have no doubt where Jesus is. He's in Second Chance Village. Go look for him there. What will you do with Jesus of Second Chance Village? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Address 1928 6th Street, Kyler Falls. I'm here about, I'm a guy, I'm Noem, N-O-M-E, and I'm here about the retirees' insurance. Last Tuesday, Beacon Journal headlines blared "City to Dip Into Cash Reserves or Risk Deficit Spending." Council surprised about budget after passage of tax increase, mayor's statement about balance. Sadly, the retirees with spouses under 65 will be in a similar situation, forced to dip into their savings or go into debt since the city has forced them off the city retiree insurance benefit plan by requiring them to pay nearly $1,200 a month for Opers coverage. Move was prompted by the city's concern to save money, even though they cannot state how much it was costing them. I think in part because, possibly because they don't want to admit that, oh, let's take the spouses off. That'll show we're doing something about the budget. And the amount of money that they're saving does not justify the financial distress they're inflicting on retirees with spouses under 65. I attended the budget hearing on March 8th and I have some comments based on, the spouse independent coverage was not intended to be secondary or supplemental, and I keep saying that, but that's not the way it was. In a written document given out by the city post-retirement benefits says, retirees, your primary health coverage will be through PRS. You will have supplemental coverage with the City of Akron. For spouses and dependent children, they may remain on the city's benefits at no charge to you. This would include hospital, surgical, major medical with prescription reimbursement of 80% after $100 deductible is met for the policy year, vision or dental, vision and dental, or they could be enrolled in health coverage through PRS and have City of Akron supplemental coverage. And they noted, the major medical coverage for retirees and dependents ceases at age 65. So city coverage is not a concern or legacy cost for when retirees and spouses reach age 65 because Medicare takes over. But spouses under 65, worthwhile, alternative, affordable coverage is just not available. I know Opers spouse coverage was, has always been expensive. I looked into it when I first retired. And Mr. Rice said at the budget hearing that Opers is the villain in this situation, but it's the city that's saying we have to have Opers coverage, not Opers. Now, questions I think need to be answered, how many retirees' spouses under the age of 65 were covered by the city in 2016 and what did it cost the city? Same question for 2017 and then, but in 2017, we paid money. How much money did the city receive from retiree spouses in 2017? And third, my third question, how many retiree spouses under the age of 65 would be eligible for city coverage in 2018 if they had Opers coverage? According to the budget hearing, there's currently 29 retiree spouses who are getting coverage from the city.
Steve, your time's up.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank the city council members who-
Can you please give us your name?
My name is Carl Buck, sorry. Carl, pass the buck. Last, I would like to thank the members who expressed their dismay last week about the mayor's spending and his promises about the .25% tax increase that no longer seems to matter now that the money, now that the city has the money. This may have surprised many of you, but it was no surprise to me, and it was what I was saying from the very start when I complained about this the very first week that I spoke about at the city council. Maybe, just maybe, we could get some of the foxholes, and I call this the holes in the streets, foxholes because they're not potholes, along the city streets fixed if we would maybe not spend some of that money that he said he wouldn't. If the city needs more money and the budget deficit seems to support this, then ask for the tax increase that reflects the true need. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak during public comment period? Seeing none, we will close our public comment period. We will go into our committee assignments. Rules, Councilwoman Keith? Budget and Finance, Councilman Freeman?
Three P M.
Planning, Councilwoman, I want to go all the way down, that's right. Councilman Kammer?
11:30.
Public Service, Councilwoman Keith? Public utilities, Councilwoman Samples? Public safety, Councilman Kammer? Parks and rec, Councilman Freeman? Housing, Councilman Kilby? Health and social services, Councilman Freeman? Economic development, Councilwoman Sims? Green committee, Councilman Swirsky? Is there anything else coming before this body? Councilwoman Sims?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I just want to say thank you to Sister Scruggs, and to be quite frank, if there was a statue, I would probably erect in this city, it'd probably be Jean Paul Scruggs for all his contributions. And so, I appreciate your passion because I'm fully aware too of the contributions that African-Americans have made to this great city and are deep roots in the arts. But the primary thing I wanted to raise this evening to say is just to thank my colleagues, Councilwoman Teremozy Samples and President Margot Somerville, along with Akron Police Department, members of the community and the administration that attended this afternoon's Spot, Shot Spotter presentation. It certainly was a very informative presentation and I think worthy of our exploration. You know, as we try to do our best as a city to create neighborhoods where people feel safe and secure, I certainly think this system is a valid way, probably not the only way, and it's certainly not to minimize the efforts that are already going forth around this effort, but I appreciate just the basic tenets of the, and premise of the tool. For those who don't know, Shot Spotter is a gunfire technology that allows data to be collected and dispensed immediately back to law enforcement about where there is gun violence or gunfire in a neighborhood. But I think the piece that I really, really appreciated about the tool is its three primary tenets, and that was to detect, to protect, and connect, which I think is so vitally important to not only restoring the sense of safety and tranquility to a neighborhood, but to remind the community that as law enforcement, we are partners in trying to really address this issue. No doubt about it, gun violence continues to be a public health crisis, but I just wanted to assure those in our city that we are taking this very seriously and working daily to devise strategies to again restore peace and tranquility in our neighborhoods and assure that we are being very intentional and vigilant about this. So, again, I just want to thank everyone who came out today, and I look forward to our ongoing exploration of this tool and other tools to help in our efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sims. Anything else? I think we definitely want to acknowledge, we actually have three council members who are attending National League of Cities. Councilman Jeff Fusco, Councilwoman Mobian, and Councilman Neal.
Adjourn.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn? Is there a second? All in favor, we're adjourned.
This concludes the live broadcast of Akron City Council. Margot Somerville, president of council, preside.